All right, Dr. Benjamin, I am going to give this to you, but before we give it to you, I just want you to know that it is always such a pleasure to work with you, it really is. And to make public again, the board's progress would not have been possible without your patience, your expertise, and your relentlessness, you know, so just thank you, thank you, thank you. And we look forward to the many more retreats that we will have to have with you. So if we're not on your calendar, I know that Chancellor Jackson will get us on your calendar.
Okay, well, thank you, and Happy New Year, everybody. It's been a while since we've been together. But before I start, I think Dr. Jackson is going to talk about the strategic plan, and then I'll talk about what we're going to try to expeditiously do tonight.
All right, thank you, Dr. Benjamin. I won't take, hopefully, not more than five minutes. Just to give you a quick update on the strategic plan that the district is involved in, as well as the educational master planning process or the EMP that the colleges are going through. So just to go back a little bit to remind you, the colleges began the EMP process in the spring and fall of 2021, and the district began its strategic planning process in 2020 with the intent of completing it in 2021. This process was continued under former interim chancellor Walter. However, the district's strategic plan is currently incomplete. So that we would not stall the process, I encouraged the colleges to continue planning as we went out for a request for proposal, or RFP, for an agency to provide oversight of this process with the intent of awarding a contract in late September or early October. Unfortunately, there was a huge delta between the bids we received, and there were components of the RFP that were not clearly defined. And traditionally, the district would complete its planning process in advance of the colleges' EMPs so that our plan can inform the colleges' processes. It was felt that we needed to repost and refine the RFP, which meant that the timeline had to be extended. The holiday break and the return of Dr. Brown exercising her retreat rights back to the classroom also had an impact on this process, although the committee did meet and made the decision to repost the RFP prior to the end of the fall semester. So it was no fault of anyone, it just, the timing was not good. So the new bid with information that I definitely wanted to be included in that will be reposted this Friday. The RFP process will close in February because I wanted to make sure we had an addendum in there, and we anticipate the completion of the final documents by October 31st, 2022. And that's for the entire process, the colleges' part as well as the district's part. The reason for the reopening, we wanted to add additional criteria and make it more robust. The same committee is in place that reviewed the initial RFPs, the applicants that previously submitted, we encouraged them to resubmit. And we understand that this is an inconvenience to the colleges, but we want to get this right as it will guide our planning actions in regards to our facilities' master plan and our focus for the next five years. Which then leads us to the other discussion that's on the agenda for this evening, which is for us to revisit the district's mission that is also part of that strategic planning process. And again, with a mission in place that helps to guide the colleges as they complete their EMP. The other components that we wanted to make sure that were in the RFP was to conduct a charrette where we will invite the public to come in and help us in this process. We want to seek their support as we develop our plans for the next five years. And we also want to make sure that we cover all of the items and provide a environmental scan which needs to be completed for the colleges, again, to be able to finish their processes. So that is the update on where we are right now. And one of the critical items is for us to look at, as part of this evening's activities, is to look at our mission, our district mission. Pending any questions, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Benjamin.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Jackson. And so my understanding is that we need to get this done tonight, so I'm going to push you pretty hard. I think you've seen it several times, what I put together in concert with Dr. Jackson is just a series of activities we're going to show you. I don't know what you've done before, so I'm going to talk to you about the components of a mission statement. I will share with you some other district mission statements. And we will look at the current mission statement for the district and the one that went through the shared governance process. And then I have to make a decision what your mission statement will be. We'll see how far we can get, because after that, we need to look at your goals. I thank you in advance for participating in the survey, for completing the survey. And we'll also take a look at how you responded to how you think you're doing on your statement of cooperation. But we're going to start first with the, just the components of a mission statement. This is really simple. I just put this together so you could see what a mission statement is, what most people, in terms of a definition. What a mission statement does, and in this case, is for your district. It announces your purpose, it's the why, it's the why you exist. That's what you're telling the world. It's a combination of what you do and how and why you do it, expressed in a way that encapsulates the values that are important to you. And in this case, seven people, and you need to come to agreement on that. And that's where I'm going to try to get you. So you answer three questions in that, and it can end up being a sentence, as you'll see in a minute. What does the district do? How do you do what you do? And why do you do what you do? I want you to just make notes, I don't want to come back to the slide, because we're going to look at some, and I want you to see whether these are the questions to answer. What does your district do? How does your district do what you do? And why do you do what you do? Three questions. And then you end up with your purpose. And so your purpose is to, and then you're finishing that sentence. So description of how you operate generally. You incorporate one or more core values in the description, you can do that. List core values that are important in conducting your business. And typically, I'll have people just go through this exercise, but I'm not, I'm just talking you through it, because we don't have a lot of time. And then finally, I use this to help somebody do a statement for their cabinet, I forgot to change that one. Describe the spark or the passion behind the work you do as a district. To what end are you doing this work? And I know everybody would have the same answer for that. So that's that part. Any questions about that? That's just really simple. It's your purpose, what do you do? Why do you exist? How do you do it? And why do you do it? Simple. Now, we are going to look at some district statements from other districts. These were in your packet. We see San Francisco, now think of those three things I just gave you and see if they answer this in this simple sentence. San Francisco's district says, "Consistent with our vision, City College of San Francisco, what, provides educational programs and services that promote student achievement and lifelong learning. To what end? To meet the ends, needs, rather, of our diverse community." Simple. Foothill Deans says, "The mission of our district is student success. We are driven by an equity agenda and guided by core values of excellence, inclusion, and sustainability." Chabola Cacitas, right up or down the freeway from you. The Chabola Cacitas District offers innovation, I'm sorry, innovative educational opportunity and support services to prepare students to succeed in a diverse global society by challenging them to think critically, to engage socially, and to acquire workplace knowledge and educational skills. That's why they exist. "The mission of the Los Angeles District is to foster student success for all individuals seeking advancement by providing equitable and supportive learning environments of our nine colleges. The district empowers students to identify and complete their goals through educational and support programs that lead to completion of two- or four-year degrees, certificates, transfer, career preparation. In doing so, the district fulfills its commitment to the community to provide the social welfare of the region, to enhance the local economy, to close persistent equity gaps, and to prepare future community leaders." There's their why. College Marin across the bay. "They provide education opportunities for our students and community members, preparation for transfer to four-year schools and universities, workforce education, basic skills improvement, intellectual and physical development, and cultural enrichment." San Diego, one sentence, as most of them are. "The mission of the district is to provide accessible, high-quality learning experiences and undergraduate education at an affordable price. Why? To meet the educational needs of the San Diego community and the state." And San Mateos is much longer, I will not read all of this. I'll read the first paragraph. "In an atmosphere of collegiality and shared responsibility and with the objective of sustaining open access for students and being responsive to community needs, the colleges of the district will fulfill the following mission with excellence." And so they have a whole list of things they're going to do. And then in their last paragraph, they tell how. "To fulfill the mission, the district is committed to effective institutional research, et cetera." So that's all, and there's this, this is rather old, 2012. I'm sure they've updated it since then, but that was, or is maybe their mission statement. Now, we included also here for you to see, and I won't read these, because I'm sure you've seen them before, the mission of each one of your colleges. And you've obviously got four. And they're all one sentence.
Where was that material?
I'm sorry?
Helen, do you know where that, this next one is to be found? Because I'm not, has everybody else got that? Did I just not slide down far enough?
Oh, I thought I had it on the screen.
Did you have it on the screen? Do you not see it, Nikki?
I see it now, and I see it in the board docs, I just didn't slide down the page, thank you.
Oh, okay. And then the mission of your three colleges, one or two sentences for each one of them, and they do the same thing, telling why they exist. And then we go to your current statement, which is several sentences at the top, and then you have the list of multicultural, of what you do to meet the needs of your community. And then, the one prepared a year or so ago, more than a year, I think. And you didn't have any participation in this, which I think is why we're doing it now. So they went through an entire process, they came up with one sentence. "The mission proposed by your governance group, the Priorit Co. College District, is a collaborative of colleges advancing social and economic transformation for students and the community through quality education rooted in equity, social justice, and partnerships." Mission of your district. Updated, proposed. So you've got a definition, you've seen some samples, and I, what I want you to do is to respond to, I want you to look at, oops, yeah. Look at both of these, your current one and the proposed one. And I'm going to give you maybe five minutes to just make notes, and this, we'll have our discussion based on your notes. Based on the definition and the review that we've done of all these other district missions, to write your pros and cons for each one. Choose one that you support, either one of these, and tell why. So I'm going to give you about five minutes to do that. And we'll start our discussion that way.
Could you clarify, Helen? You're asking us to review?
These two that are on the screen right now, your current mission.
These two.
Uh huh, and the proposed mission. And choose the one you prefer, and you can use what you've learned about these others and what the definition is.
Okay, and is it one or the other, not a modification of one or the other?
No, we're not going to modify right now, just choose one or the other, and we'll see where everybody is.
I see, thank you.
Are we supposed to vote via chat?
I don't think so, I think that we're probably going to come back in about three minutes.
Are we just going to discuss it? Okay.
Yep, in about three minutes.
Good. Thank you.
You're on mute, Dr. Benjamin.
I didn't realize I had done that. I was just saying, I'm going to record, you'll give me a verbal answer, and I'll just make a list to see where we are, and we'll start a discussion and try to come up with one statement based on these two. Or now, we'll see what you say about them. So you'll give your choice and why. And I've got all your names listed. And Madam Chair, Madam President, I think we have just six members tonight?
We do.
Okay. And Madam Chair, do you want to start, or you want to bring up the rear?
Sure, I'll bring up the rear.
Okay, well, Bill, you want to start? Trustee Winthrop?
Winthrop? I prefer the existing mission statement. I think our mission is, as well as a lot of the community colleges, is a lot more complex than what we give credit to. And I think that by using a broader range of verbiage, that we do a better job of describing the mission.
Okay, thank you. We'll have a volunteer for next, or I'll call on someone? Kevin?
I didn't know you were going to call on me, Dr. Benjamin.
How are you?
I'm making it. So I prefer the second one.
Okay.
I think it's sleek. It allows for our in user to know what our district is about without getting caught up in the verbiage. The first one is long and not difficult to get through, but if we're in a microwave society, we get a microwave mission, and I think the second one accomplishes that.
Okay, thank you very much. Who'd like to be next?
I'll go.
Okay, thank you.
I prefer the second one. I think less is more and straight to the point. And we need to not put things, I think it's, when you put too much in, how do we even measure that we're doing any of those things? I think we need to just be straight into the point, because no one's going to read that anyway. They're not going to read all of that. What our mission is, is not as important to them as why they're coming to get their education. So let's just have something like Kevin said, that, you know, we have a microwave group. It's just something that's sweet and to the point, we're here for you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, please.
I can go, this is Deanna Luthen-Bolt. I am agreeing with my colleagues, I think the second one is just very concise, and I think that that's just personally what I was looking for in a mission statement.
Okay, thank you so much, Deanna. Next, please. Oh, go ahead, Nikki?
Yeah. If the existing values and principles statements remain in place, then I think that the second one is adequate, but I think it's incomplete.
So you would like the bullets, the bulleted items, are you calling the principles?
You know, if you go to our website and you look at our vision value, mission vision values.
Yes.
There's a, on our website, we've got a values, statements, and principles.
Right, we're not changing any of that.
So if those remain as part of the official document, then I think that the mission statement is redundant to the rest of it. But I think the mission statement itself is slightly incomplete. But I think that it's also, the first part is redundant. That is, the existing mission statement is redundant to what we have. I think the new one is too small.
Would you choose one, please?
I would choose the second.
Okay.
Provided that the rest of the verbiage on the website remain in place.
Now, Dr. Jackson, it's my understanding that the only thing where you're changing is the mission, reviewing is the mission statement, is that not correct?
And so you're asking for a choice, but it's a choice within a context. And if the context is here, look, so I'll stop, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only thing that we are looking at changing is our mission statement, because that provides guidance to the colleges, and it should align with what the colleges are saying. If we had done this in the right, you know, direction.
Yeah, okay, but we're, yeah, that's okay, we're strengthening it out now. But all of that remains the same. And now we're down to, or up to President Cindy.
I would, I prefer number two. And the reason that I prefer number two is because the purpose of a mission is to come alive, to truly, really come alive and not sit on a ledger or in a book. And if it is, if it's something that could be memorized, if it's short enough that could be memorized, then it can be internalized. And if it's internalized in everything we do, faculty, classified students, then it becomes kind of our North Star, it becomes our compass on a day-to-day basis. So number two, for those reasons.
Okay. So the majority, Bill, tonight, from the six of you, would be number two. And I am going to just switch for a moment, if I can do it quickly, and I think I can, to your page with your mission statement. So can you see my screen? Because I may have to go back out and come back in.
Yes.
Do you see mission on it?
Yes.
Oh, great. So my understanding, and you guys can correct me, is that where you have mission here, the statement we just agreed on, if we finalize in that place, would replace all of what you have for mission, and then values and principles, and values and principles would remain, would follow. Stay as they are, remain as they are, and the only thing replaced on this page would be the mission statement. So it seems as though we might have agreement. Bill, can you live with this one-sentence mission statement, but keeping all of the values and principles that follow?
Sure.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any objections to this, moving this mission statement forward for your approval at the next meeting?
Well, yes. So if I can say something when it's appropriate.
Please. It's time.
All right. I appreciate the brevity of the new mission statement. But I think, Dr. Benjamin, you put us in a forced choice that's not necessary. You said, choose this or this. And I think because the board, I think our objection, starting a long time ago, was, hey, wait, if we're going to do a mission statement as the representatives of the community, that mission statement should include us. So you've asked us now to just come back and say, well, do you like this form? Do you like this form? And you're saying, well, here, choose one or the other.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry, Nikki.
I think that the board overwhelmingly has said, yes, we like a shorter statement. Now, having said that, are there one or two or three words that might be included in that shorter statement that would not undermine the brevity in any significant way, but that would include some critical mission component that we might all agree on? And so I would propose that we have that discussion now before we just say, oh yeah, let's take this as it is.
All right, so I was trying to, I thought I'd gotten away, but I didn't. So we will do that if other people agree. Are you guys in agreement with taking a closer look at this one to see if you want to make some modifications to it? We have the time.
As long as our collective goal is to get this done. So at a certain point, it's going to have to be collegial compromise, because we got to get this done.
Okay, so I'm trying to figure out how to copy it, and I don't know that I can. So I may have to just type it, because if we're going to, um, we're, uh.
While you're doing that, Dr. Benjamin, can I just make a statement? So on the Peralta mission and values and principles page, what we also find is that the bullet points under the old mission are articulated yet again under principles. And so though we are taking all of that out, it still remains on the page for those that were unsure to what happens to the content.
Okay, so I'm going to screen share again, so we can take a closer look at what was brought to you by the governance group. Make it a little bigger. So let's just read it one more time. "The Priorit Co. College District is a collaborative of colleges advancing social and economic transformation for students and the community. And how do you do that? Through quality education rooted in equity, social justice, and partnerships." Are there changes anyone would like to propose, amendments to the statement? Is there anything you disagree with, like you don't agree with their language, phrases, words?
So I have a hand up, but I don't know who's.
I can't see it, go ahead, please.
All right. So the principles of environmental sustainability, I think, are core to the society. They are existential. And so if that's not part of our mission, I think we're missing something really important. Environmental sustainability is mentioned under values and principles, but not in a way that talks about us as a mission. It simply says, well, we should be a model of environmental sustainability in our own practices. But it doesn't say that part of our mission is to ensure the sustainability of our societies. And I think that that needs to be part of our mission. So I would propose adding that language in here somewhere, one word, two words. So I would propose adding that language in here somewhere, one word, two words. Social justice, environmental sustainability, you know, rooted in equity, sustainability or environmental sustainability, social justice and partnerships. And if those words were added, I would stand back and say, done, I'm all good. But I, I, I think, yeah, let me stop.
Yeah. So let's see what kind of responses we get to that on environmental sustainability. Are there objections? Is there support reactions?
Yeah. I think that that's a, a good and important idea. Others?
So would you like for, and, and this is a logistical question. And Dr. Benjamin, would you like for one of the staff, Sasha, to bring this up and edit it? So you can facilitate so that as we make changes, it's up on the screen rather than.
Oh, you can't see it on the screen right now?
Yeah, but I don't see the change if you add it.
I didn't add anything. I'm not gonna add anything until people respond to see whether. That, yeah.
Okay, all right. I was just trying to make it easier if you wanted some assistance, but that's fine. You can handle it.
No, I think I'm okay. I'm just trying to see what people think about that. The environmental sustainability idea before I write anything. And then if people agree, we'll figure out where we want to put it. Are there objections to it? How does it feel to you? We heard from Cindy.
Oh, I'm, I'm okay with the edits. One thing trustee Gonzalez UN is really good at is making edits on the fly. So I might offer a suggestion that trustee Gonzalez UN takes a stab at it. And so we can keep going. And I'm pretty sure whatever he comes up with will be good. I'll give a look at that.
It seems as though, I don't want to move you too fast. It seems as though there are no objections.
No, I, I'm fine with it. I'm fine with it as it is. Um, I, I don't want to belabor this just to add some words in because I, I really don't see, even though we might say that, I don't want to put anything in there where there's no congruence, where, where we really, I don't see that that's happening. That's why I thought the way it was, it's great and, and move on. If, if everyone else wants to add more to it, then fine, but I am fine with it as it is.
But you would take minor changes?
I would take minor changes, but I just don't want to see it get convoluted. You know, if you're adding one or two words in it, but um, it's not gonna change anything. I mean, we want to get our, get the statement out there short and succinct. If somebody has some commitment to certain words that they feel must be in there, then that's their commitment to certain words. But for me, I think that we're fine the way it is.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, so Nikki just had a few words, sounded like two or three. So Nikki, you want to respond?
I just, I just, if we're gonna do it, let's just do it. I don't think we should spend an hour on adding two or three words. That's what I'm saying.
Words, right after social justice.
Uh huh.
Or before social justice, just anywhere in that string, environmental sustainability.
Okay.
We could also say environmental justice instead of environmental sustainability, but.
Let's say sustainability since we already have justice.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
So would you, would you read that and see what you think? Somebody was about to speak. I think I cut you off.
Yes, I was just going to ask a question. Our mission statement will be something that we are held accountable to. So I guess the question just becomes, how will we measure? Can we measure all of these areas? And then, of course, subsequent to that.
Yeah, that's my concern as well, Cindy. And so when, when, when you, when we add that, I'm like, how are we doing that?
I, I think you can, I think all of these you can, you can measure.
Okay.
Just think about equity. You got a lot going there. You can look at environmental sustainability, the different programs you got. I think you probably have, uh, you, just in terms of what you do in your district to sustain the environment. You've done a lot of things, I think, in terms of decisions you've made about things you purchased and all that. Uh, social justice, you guys are strong in that area and the partnerships as well. So in these four areas, I think you can. I mean, you know your district better than I do.
And then, and then just the last question, and this is where I would need others' eyes and opinions. Grammatically, after through quality, quality education, do we put, would it be, would it sound better or structurally is it better if we say that is or which is rooted in equity? Or does it grammatically flow in terms of structure?
It works.
Okay.
Um, I, I did have a question. And, and I'm not sure because I'm not a English major. But is a collaborative of college versus is a collaboration of colleges in the active voice? Was a question. And then, I would, I would, a recommendation, and you can take it or not, but I would change the location and say rooted in equity, social justice, environmental sustainability, and partnerships.
Yes.
You, you got a reason for that? I, I don't, I'm just curious. I'm moving it as I.
I think that if you ask people to rank how strongly they feel about those issues that.
That's the order.
That would be the order.
And it's also close equity, social justice are, are very related.
They're close.
One another.
I think collaborative is better than collaboration. Uh, to, to me, but I'm sure they had lots of discussions about that word.
I'm good. Just a question.
Other responses?
I'm like, um, yeah, what's being done here is part of Dr. Hayakawa's letter of instruction, if you will, sucking it way up the ladder. But when you're looking at the various principles you're talking about here, you're leaving out, in my mind, and again, I'm a business guy, but you're leaving out, uh, career enhancement, career awareness, but really a career enhancement from the standpoint of our students succeeding in life.
I wonder, Bill, if, and, and I know it's not articulate or delineated specifically, but in the beginning where it says advancing economic transformation for students, it seems more implied than articulated, but I think we're also talking about jobs and technical education as well as.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking as well.
Question. Thing that you see, Bill, on the values page that was up earlier, there's a whole piece about employee development.
That's still gonna remain there, Bill. Kevin?
Yeah, all the details follow.
Kevin, sorry, where you.
Yeah, question. So will this go back to the shared governance process before it comes to us for a final vote?
No, this was a recommendation and the board is a final vote.
Okay.
But it won't be agenda, because it's not agendas for a vote tonight. That'll be next month, Janet, Dr. Jackson.
It, it will be, and I will also make sure that it gets on the agenda for the next meeting of the, the PGC.
Okay. Any other responses? Linda, you okay? Trustee Handy?
Yes, I am.
Uh, trustee Gonzalez?
I'm pitching.
Okay, trustee Jenkins?
I'm fine with this.
Okay, Madam President?
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow?
I'll go with the majority. I don't, I don't particularly support it, but I'll go with the majority.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Trustee Delphin Polk?
Yep, this is, this is fine.
Okay.
Going along with us.
Madam President, I think we have a mission statement on which our board members agree, our board members present agree.
Great. Wonderful. Thank you. And that only took about, you know, 20 minutes or so. Fantastic. Um, a more philosophical question since we have just a second, and hopefully it won't take too much time. The process, Dr. Benjamin, in terms of a mission statement, and I know that we had talked about the ways in which it should have gone according to an actual correct process, should a mission statement in its development come to the board earlier than at the end, or, or is our assumption about that incorrect?
I don't think your assumption is, is incorrect. In my experience, it's been a kind of grassroots effort, and it's one of those places where that's an unusual place for the board, in my experience. The board is at the beginning of it. When it's being reviewed, you're not the last ones. It's usually part of a strategic planning process when you review it. And the community and the board are all in on that at the beginning of it. When you're doing your brainstorming, because you start with your mission statement, it's the appropriate place to start when you're doing your strategic plan. And so the board is there at the beginning. And then when you, when it gets to you formally, at the end of the process, you've already been involved in its development. That's my experience.
Yeah, excellent. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Trustee Jenkins?
All right. So I think we're done. Oh, cool. I'm sorry, trustee Jenkins.
No, I, I never lowered my hand. Sorry about that.
Oh, okay. So I don't want to move too quickly, but it seems as though we're done with this. And we can move now to the review of the goals, and I'll have to show you what I did, how we're gonna try to go through this anyway.
Sorry, Dr. Benjamin. Trustee Whitrow, do you have a comment, or is that a late tap?
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay.
So now we're going to look at the results of your responses to the work on your goals, just mid-year. And the purpose here is to remind you what you said you were going to do and to see where you are, if we need to make any corrections here mid-year. And I didn't give you any, I didn't give you a progress report or anything. This is just for you to, to just look at them and see, we're making some progress on these, we're not making progress, we need to change this. We're not gonna get a thing done on this. We need to move it to next year. We don't need this one, just where you are right now. So you can see here, I'm just gonna walk you through. And I asked you to do two things here. Decide, and I know some of this might have been hard for some of you, because you, you may not know, there's just so much to do and so much goes on, and you have so much business, but you responded, so. So the, do you feel that you made progress on it? Yes or no? And depending on that response, do you think this is one that should be retained, moved to the next year, or you should not have it? So this first one has to do with whether or not you've been receiving those disaggregated reports you wanted. And, uh, sixty, well, you can see the percentages. Said yes, and I have to tell you, three people completed the survey, but we're going with what we got, but we can still have some discussion here. But you should know whether or not you've received reports on student progress. Two said yes and one said no, but all those three said you want to retain this. Any comments, reactions? Anybody disagree with that? And then in B, you're asking the chancellor to develop a mech, uh, to develop a measurable and effective mechanism to hear student voices. We had this one last year as well. And to create a climate survey and listening session so that the board can hear student feedback and concerns. So it looks as though little or no progress has been made on this, but you said you want to keep it. So the, is that true that little or no, is this one, we need to just move for next year? Will any progress be made on this, this year? And I'll be quiet and let you guys talk. Dr. Jackson, you want to start on this one?
Yes. This was a goal that the board put forward. And to be able to conduct a survey required an institutional researcher at the district to do a district-wide. Uh, we have already conducted surveys at each of the colleges have done, but it has not been a district-wide. We hired, uh, Dr. Herrera in the fall semester, and he is working on that. Um, I reported to the board that it should be going out in the spring. We wanted it to go out in the spring because we felt that we would have more students on campus in the spring rather than at a online modality. So he has been working on that. We, I think he's finished with actually the instrument. It's just a matter of getting it out to students and capturing that data. One of the other things, that's one thing, another component of that, and the reason also that we wanted to wait until the spring is there is the qualitative. So we can send out a survey, we can scan the, you know, yes, no Likert scale, we can do all of that. But we also wanted to conduct some qualitative research and look at some focus groups. Um, and again, until the fall semester, we did not have a full complement of college activity directors who would be the, the point people for conducting that, those types of sessions in addition to working with our, our institutional researchers. So yes, progress has been made. Results have not been posted, but we have made progress. And I would say that it's probably a little bit more than 33%, but until we have data, until we can analyze the data, uh, which also takes time and then present that so that it's, uh, not just data, but actually information gleaned from a couple of things. On our webpage, which is getting ready to go up. If you haven't seen that, it is out there now, and we are capturing data from that also. So it, it isn't just gonna be a, a survey, and we give you the survey results. We want to look at what is happening with our webpage, information we're getting from that, what's happening with our students that are face to face, what is happening online, and put all of that together along with qualitative research, which is conducted face to face to give you a robust report, not just a, a survey and say, okay, check the box, we did it.
So, Dr. Jackson, will this be completed in the spring, or do you think it'll carry over into fall or summer?
I think it'll be completed. One portion of it will be completed in the, um, spring. But we also want to do a follow-up because we're not sure, we're not getting a robust number of students face to face. So, you know, uh, it may carry over, uh, but we will get a sampling of it and provide some data this semester.
Board members, any comments, reactions to Dr. Jackson's progress report on this one?
Yes, I was just gonna ask the chancellor, even though we are gonna be distributing the survey to face-to-face students, could we also have a complimentary mechanism that allows for, uh, students to also access the survey online?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. It'll go out in both, both forms. Um, the qualitative is the part that is the face-to-face. The other will be, um, online or electronically available for students to respond.
And then the second part of that question, sorry Nikki, the second part would be, if in the spring we're only able to do one, and then the other part we won't be able to do until the following, I think it might even be helpful to have just that data available to us at the end of the spring semester.
Absolutely. That's, that is our plan right now is to have that available during the semester and not wait till the end of the semester, because it will also help to influence what courses and what students are looking for, for the fall, when we develop our, our summer schedule.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, other comments or questions?
This will be coming to us, I, this is Deanna, um, this will be coming to us as a report, right?
Um, yes, it'll be coming to you as a report and probably will be a presentation that we make at the board meeting, so we can share it with the general public.
Great.
Okay, that's great.
And then I think we have Nikki.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Dr. Jackson, for the report. And I, I guess I want to say that I'm not. I think we've got something way deeper going on. I think we've got something way deeper going on here. This isn't just about a survey. I, I think if we look across the board and we see the indications of the weaknesses in our student engagement work. You know, we, at College of Alameda, as I understand it, they were saying they were, they were so excited because they had one student senator elected. We know that the bus pass referendum was administered poorly once, even when we didn't have COVID. And then the next time it didn't even happen. And now we're still waiting for a third vote. We have, uh, basically uncontested elections across the board. And what it's leading to is, uh, gaps and student representation. I think there's something institutional going on here that's way deeper than COVID that really we need to pay attention to. Um, so I'm, I'm gonna, uh, I'm just gonna leave the comment there, but I think, Dr. Jackson, y- you understand that this is so not just a survey issue.
Exactly.
It's a much deeper thing, so.
Yeah, you know, I think I have to agree with you on, on this. I think this is the, we, even moving towards COVID, the student engagement, um, the student leaders, the elections, it, it's, it went from being extremely robust to almost nonexistent. And, um, why this is happening? I, I really can't be sure. The just, is it just disinterest or just the students? Because even some of the students that are still here that have been there for a while, they're moving away from the college level into the state level and, and their involvement, but they don't feel like they're making the connections on their own campuses. So I think we really need to know what's going on here.
And hopefully the survey will help.
Yeah, I'm hoping, yeah.
I think the survey will help, but I, I find honestly, when you, you're looking at, um, deeper meaning and understanding and it comes through themes as you have these qualitative focus groups. Um, you know, I think that will give us a better understanding of what's going on, um, rather than just a survey. Um, because when you have a really good focus group, and, and I did some research when I, I did my own dissertation. What I got from the qualitative component and the focus groups was much deeper understanding of what was happening. And at the more qualitative research I did, the more focus groups, there were themes that emerged from that. And so that's is what we need to address. What are those themes that keep emerging that are also validated by what we're gathering from our quantitative surveys? And we haven't done that, that cross. And then the other thing that we need to do is to compare that to what we got from the colleges when they did their surveys. With that, that takes a little bit of time. It takes, uh, some analysis. Um, and, and that's what I want to give the board. I don't want to just, you know, give you a survey and say, this is what people responded. I, I want to have some solutions that come out of that work, uh, and some strategies, uh, for how to, you know, change some processes or procedures or policies, um, that the board has the ability to do. Um, that I think would effectively affect and change the trajectory of this downward trend uh, of apathy that both you and Trustee Handy have brought up. Trustee Ewan.
Okay. And if I could say, I, you know, I think this is really just an all hands on deck, come to Jesus moment, you know, uh, completely unacceptable, just, just completely unacceptable.
Well, I think your, your focus, if I may say so, is really good. The fact that you're aware of what's happening and having those conversations after you see quantitatively what they say would really, Dr. Jackson's saying be, give you insight that you would not otherwise have. So we go to the next one on strategic planning. It looks as though you're fully engaged from this response. Is that accurate? As a board that you engage in this process and Dr. Jackson, you gave a report at the beginning, um, of our discussion here. About this, any comments on your involvement in strategic planning, board members? You're okay with that?
If I may, we just would love to hear from, um, individual comments who were unable to draft a report as we go through each fuller point, just so that we're, we're collecting all of the information.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Cindy, I didn't, I didn't understand what you said. Could you say that again, please?
For those that were unable to complete it, just if you could also let us know which areas specifically needed help or, you know, I just would love to hear the discussion portion of each one.
And, and I can provide a, a short update, um, if there's gaps in, um, you know, either memory or, you know, what is going on because there, it's very complex, uh, what, running the operations of the district. So there may be items that I know of that maybe individual board members don't. So please ask questions. I, I'd be more than happy to, to provide short updates as we go through this so that you have a better understanding if, if there is a knowledge gap.
And I'm trying to capture some notes. So it looks like on strategic planning, and we've already heard from Dr. Jackson on this one, that you think there is progress, obviously, and you want to keep this as a goal. This is something you can a, at the end of the year, when we go back, you'll feel confident that you have had some appropriate engagement in the planning process. Is that correct? That's what I'm assuming from these numbers.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I would say that too. I would support that.
Okay, good. Now, oh, I'm sorry.
Dr. Benjamin, did you get my, my response to you?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm, I wasn't sure. Yeah.
Okay, so in board goal two, uh, this has to do with DEI and social justice. And this first one is related to what we were just talking about with the survey. So this one says, using the results of the climate survey of students and development and implement a system in which inequalities of gender, race, et cetera, uh, and other culture and demographic indicators among students and employees are identified, discussed, addressed, and assessed. And this is one we're carrying over for last year. Now this one, progress fifty-fifty, you want to keep it. Do we need to talk about this one any further?
Seems like the solution to this is the same solution to the student climate survey. Now that we have an institutional researcher, this could also be something that dealt with, right, Dr. Jackson, this spring. So not just for students, but really for everyone.
Absolutely.
Yeah, this one is employees as well.
Yes. And, and that goes to, um, the proposal for, uh, I called it a teaching and learning center, but, uh, I, I think I accepted recommendations, the professional development and learning center. Um, and that will also help to further, uh, the goals of diversity, equity, inclusion, and social justice.
So the, the, the climate survey for both students and employees, because in above, we were talking about student voice and students only. But this will, I just want to make sure we capture the right thing in, in the activity. Um, it, employees included in this?
Yes.
This time around. Okay, alright.
And, and we already have a baseline, um, when we, we had the, um, oh, I forget the name of the company that came out and did a survey, employee survey. Um, and they're helping us with our, um, um, our data integrity, and I can't think of the name of the company.
West.
Cambridge West, yes. Yeah, so we already have a baseline from Cambridge West. We just need to go back and, and re-survey uh, and compare that to what happened and what we have on, already on file.
Right.
Oh, Nikki. Can add, you know, there was last year, I think it was last year, there was a a process, it was like four, five, four meetings. It was sponsored by Siri's office and the PFT and the academic senate. And it might have been SCOU or the classified senate. It was like collaborative conversations. They had really good turnout, pretty consistency, consistently. You're, you're supposed to sign up and you commit to all four of them. I, I think that's a group of consultants and, and in-house kind of planners who should be tapped into in moving that forward. But I'll just say there was a weakness. There was really good turnout among white people and black people. And the turnout among Latinx and API was pretty weak. But it was a good start. And I think that, that it would be a shame to not capture that initiative and the people who really put a lot of thought and work into that conversation. Um, so Chancellor, I'll leave that with you, but.
I would, I would ask, yeah, I would ask, um, Dr. Benjamin, if she could add, I believe that that was done by the former college I was with, uh, Skyline College and their Equity Institute, I believe. LaSana Otef was, um, the person that I think helped to spearhead that, that four-day, um, event. So just so I don't.
I'm sure if you just talked to Siri or Kimberly King, both of them were, were deeply involved in that with some other people. And, and I think there's a wealth of data there. A lot of people who really worked hard to, to kind of build that out.
We'll, we'll go back and, and touch bases with that, but I, I think that was with the Equity Institute. And just to let you know, I've already had discussions with, um, um, Kimberly to provide some additional training. Uh, we just wanted to wait until, I think it was too late in the semester to try to put something on. Um, and we wanted to ensure that it was also part of the flex day activities. But I think that even may or may not happen. But we do plan on doing some activities like that, uh, ongoing, uh, for individuals. Um, but I, I that will jog my memory to contact Dr. Brown. Thank you.
Okay, so moving to the next one, continue your sample.
Deanna? Just really quickly on this, is there going to be a process for the trustees to be involved in that? Because I also attended some of those and I have my own thoughts about, about, about that.
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
Absolutely. And, and I will seek your advice. Um, when I put things out in my chancellor's report, I try to give you a heads up, so please let me know.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Cindy, may I go now? May I continue, Cindy? I can't see whose hands up. Alright.
Yes, you're good.
Alright, so continue to receive reports from the college and district office on DEI efforts. I'm assuming that's happening based on these responses. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then C, review and discuss diversity data submitted to the state chancellor's office and monitor for its impact on students. And I'm assuming that's around the vision for success, the, that, those kinds of reports maybe?
It is, and it also, um, has to do with the SCIF and the factors, um, and identifying where we are in that process. So it's, it's a combination. Um, and I believe that, um, president, um, I think it was President Abella Reese and I, uh, attended a, a DEI. And so it was with the idea that we were going to submit a proposal um, to get funds to be able to do a pilot on DEI. And that I found out that we cannot put in a proposal until we finish the last proposal that we got, uh, which was with College of, uh, Alameda, and they are finishing up their spending plan, uh, this semester. So.
Okay. I'm going to the next one. When discussing student data, engage in discussions addressing the impact of structural elements of racism and social equal, inequality around food, transportation, housing, and security when possible. I'm assuming that's happening based on the response here.
It's happening. And just to give the board, um, use this opportunity to give the board an update. Um, we put in for a, uh, we put in a proposal because the state had funds for, um, housing insecurity specifically. Um, that went forward. There were, uh, the, the funding for that was, was earmarked and it is now with the Department of Finance. Um, we've been told that we should hear back on our proposal sometime in late January, February. Uh, but that's where it is. It was not administered by the chancellor's office, but it was administered by the Department of Finance on our feasibility study for housing. So, um, we are addressing that as well as, um, the individual efforts by the colleges. I think Trustee Handy has been involved in that at Merritt College. I would say that, um, we are doing those individual efforts.
Yeah, I've heard that Aloney and Chabot have heard that on, on theirs. And I was asking if we had heard anything yet.
No, we have not heard anything yet. And that was as of, uh, the beginning of the year, the third of January, I sent out a, a email. So, uh, unless I, I would definitely like, I'm, let me check with my colleagues. You said Aloney and, uh, Chabot?
And I believe, I believe they said Aloney and Chabot.
Okay.
I believe it. I know Aloney was one of them, but I think the other one was Chabot.
Okay, I'll check and see. Um, when I, last time I checked, I was told late January or February. So I will definitely follow up on that. Thank you, Trustee Handy.
Thank you.
And then we have Deanna and Nikki.
Yeah, I want to give a really quick shout out to the college presidents. Um, the reports that we've been getting during the um, board meetings, regular board meetings have been really comprehensive in identifying some of these areas and reporting back on that from the campuses. So I want to commend you Chancellor, um, and the college presidents for providing that information so clearly and so often.
I want to, trusty, you know, that shout out to Trustee Handy who very consistently has reported on the efforts up at Merritt and, and around food distribution. And it's just, you know, just kind of hearing that regular report, I think, helps us understand kind of like, one, what she's doing in particular, but I think more importantly, just the institutional efforts that, that are taking place in the district. The other thing that I want to just raise though is that if we're passive on this bus pass referendum and not doing the education that needs to happen, then a lot of students who should have access to buses, low-cost access, are going to, are going to continue not having that access. And that was just such a, a tragic loss. And screwed up the vote and then failed to hold the vote again.
Um, yeah, I, Nikki, I, I can't agree more with you. That is, that was cutting off our, our students. And, and I had asked that as a board, we set a might, a major, that there has to be a minimum number of votes cast before we could move forward. Because at, at times we were not getting a lot of people, but we should not allow fifty or so students to make a decision for all students with such, I mean, a minimal votes. That is, for us, for our population, that bus pass was vital to our, um, enrollment piece. And to allow that to happen and not be just trying to make it, you know, reinstated or educate the students so that we could get that done. I mean, I've had students, I've been at Merritt College and a student was stranded and would have to call um, Uber or something because he had dropped a class and his bus pass was canceled. I mean, it was that important to the students and they weren't even aware of how many units they had to have, but without that pass, they just can't get there. They just can't get to us. And we've got to fix that. We've, we've got to fix that quickly. And we, and we have to set a minimum number on these student elections so that we don't get what we had, you know, things, what they've had before. If the students are not trying to participate, okay, then they're not trying to participate. But we can't let major things like the, the health fees or, or those types of things be eliminated by a tiny amount of voters where the others, it's not disinterested, they just have other things going on in their lives. They weren't paying attention to it. But maybe that's our fault. Maybe we have to really reach out hard to them when it's something that. But maybe that's our fault. Maybe we have to really reach out hard to them when it's something that important that they need, we need their votes on, but.
Well, in this case, Linda, it wasn't even, it wasn't even that. It's that the way that the district administrators counted the vote, they counted people who did not vote, who abstained as no. And they added those to the no's and then those, the abstentions and the no's were greater than the yeses. But abstentions. That was just foolish.
Abstention is I don't have enough information to make a decision. It's not a no.
I, that's what I argued at the time and the then Chancellor refused to take any action on it. But I'll pause and just say it needs to be redone ASAP.
Well, we have Dr. Jackson, we have you now. Can we, can we please? For our students' sake.
We'll look into it. We have a proposal. Well, it's a, it's an AP that we're working on right now regarding participation, student conduct, those types of things. And so I will definitely try to get some more information on that. Because I I've heard that mentioned on more than one occasion. And I I'm not sure. Well, I I'll I'll get some more information and I'll report back to the board on that. I'm sure Royal is putting it down for us to follow up on at our DAT meeting coming up. And and you're right, our students do count on it. Some of the factors that why students don't attend, you know, transportation.
Yeah, how 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 would they get here? But they've out of jobs, no, no work. All of this has gone on for two years. How are they going to get, how are they going to get here, you know?
Okay. All right, may I move to the next one? I'm at the chair.
Yeah.
Okay, actively monitor district development and progress on the implementation of State Chancellor's office call to action. Now, this is a hundred percent comments on this one. Is that happening?
Um, yes, that is happening and we do have to provide reports to the Chancellor's office. And we also, once we provide those reports to the Chancellor's office, Dr. Brown has been very diligent in presenting that information to the board.
Okay, on this next one, I receiving reports, this is from last year too, because you want to keep track of what's happening with our students, with your students as they, as as this change in instruction and just the whole way college is done, I guess. And the impact.
Yeah, we had a report on that. And we do need to have another report. We had a report on that in the fall and compared the the trend analysis of by race, ethnicity, gender. And we disaggregated it by areas looking at TOPS code, CTE programs compared to juvenile education. And I I think that's good. That's something that I think we do need to keep aware of, especially given the the tenor of things and a lot of colleges putting because of the the COVID nineteen and also the Omicron virus, putting more courses online for the spring semester than was anticipated. In- including us.
Now, the goal was to do it only in fall. And so you're saying it was done for Fall twenty and Fall twenty-one?
Right, because we try to look at the academic year versus the semester.
I think that's why we did it the first time. So you want to do spring to spring now? You want to add spring to this? Or you just?
We're, we're going to look at spring, but it'll be included in a report that we provide in the fall.
Okay, so this one's done, actually.
Done that. I I just would like for us to continue to do it, but it's the board, if the board wants to.
Yes, definitely. I mean, this information is so important because especially as we're still trying to figure out how this landscape is going to look with our online students and success rate.
Okay, so now we go to go three. Which has to do with some concerns. This is kind of carry, continuation from last year. Addressing ACCJC and State Chancellor's Office concerns. So the first one, participate in training on accreditation standards with emphasis on responsibilities aboard in the accreditation process and standards related to board effectiveness and expected behavior. So of the three people, sixty-two, sixty-six, they said there's progress. It should be retained. And one of those three people said, you need to move this to twenty-two, twenty-three reactions.
I think I, this is where I started to get confused in terms of retaining and moving. Because retaining still means moving to twenty-twenty-two, right? So it's it's the same, even though if we're retaining it, we're actually moving it to twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, right? Okay, so I think.
Yeah, if there's no progress being done, if it looks like something you can't get done this time, so that we, you know, beat yourselves up at the end of the year, we can just take this one off and have it in next year's. But what has happened here? Have you had any training this year?
Yes.
Oh, good. Okay.
There's been so much ACCJC work this past year that I feel like we've kind of probably had it every couple of months with all of the reports of it.
Yeah, we we did. We we had board training at the beginning that was done by Dr. Fox. We also did it for the general constituency groups. We've had updates. I I will say that we anticipate meeting all of the requirements that were put forward by the visiting team by twenty-twenty-two June of this year. So if we move that, you know, to the twenty-two, twenty-three year, that would be appropriate.
Okay. Okay, good job. And then the next one has to do with the Chancellor's office with the, on the twelve recommendations regarding board governors from the Fall twenty-twenty visit. You got that done, right? Is that a completed?
Not everything.
Quite, huh?
Yeah, not, not quite. Not everything is completed. That's why in our report, we indicated. But one of the things that came out of the visit and the report that was submitted to the commission is that we have a plan. They validated the plan. We have milestones and we are meeting those milestones.
Chancellor, though. Sorry, my my memory on this is a bit foggy. The recommendations regarding board governance, though, not all of our recommendations, but the recommendations regarding board governance. Were, were there still items that we did not meet?
You might be right. I was looking at all of the recommendations, which also included finance.
Right, and that one, we, you're right, we have a plan, but I think in terms of board governance, we may have.
I think we did meet all the ones for board governance. You're right. I think because it said twelve recommendations, part of the twelve were the finance. I think the board had eight. If I, my memory serves me, and I will try to go find that quickly while we're discussing it. So before the end of the meeting, I should have that information.
And you are monitoring accreditation activities at the colleges?
Absolutely.
Any discussion, questions on that? Oops, missed that out. And then you had two reports to be submitted. Fiscal report to the commission October first. I know you did that. I was around here, I think. And then FICMAT?
Yes.
December, yes, okay. Those are done. Let me just note that. You guys have been busy. All right, and now fiscal affair. Provide direction for budget policy and priorities that support good decisions and clean audits by receiving points each semester on schedule development in relation to availability of funds and other financial issues. Any comments on this sort of questions?
The percentage for retained says sixty-six point seven, yes, a very three point three, no?
Yes, that's what that means. And it's the same for monitoring plan strategies and our progress on enrollment management plan. I can't.
How do others feel about this? Seems like that's something we should definitely retain, anything related to budget and finance.
Do you feel like you're making good decisions and having clean audits this year? Well, you're just finishing an audit, I get, no, in December?
It hasn't, I think that was extended, right Chancellor? And it's coming to us soon?
I'm I'm sorry, I was looking for that other report. What was the question again, Board President?
Our audit, it was extended, right?
Right, our audit was extended until February. That was statewide. The Chancellor's, State Chancellor's office extended all audits because of COVID nineteen until February. And auditors are conducting that business right now.
Okay, and what about this next one on monitoring plan strategies and our progress on enrollment management plan?
Yes, that is completed. We do have an enrollment management plan that was submitted to the colleges with our FTF and FTS goals that was submitted in December of this year for this upcoming year for summer, fall of twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three. Excuse me, hay fever.
Okay, obviously facilities bond. How's that going? To making sure it complies.
I'm sorry.
We received reports there as well.
Um, yes, we've had several reports by AECOM, both at the district level and board meetings as well as on the colleges. Once we've awarded contracts and done all of that. Excuse me.
They've been very good about outlining where we are in terms of our timeline and what's running behind and what's on target.
Okay. Monitor district budget to ensure spending is within budget and meets the needs of the district.
Yes. I can answer that one.
Yeah. And then works with the Chancellor to ensure implementation of fiscal forms and all those recommendations. I guess it's not, maybe not redundant by both the commission and the State Chancellor's office.
Right, that one is specifically talking about the recommendations that came out of the FICMAT report that we submitted in December of this this last year.
It shows, it it is redundant to the one above, I think. So we can maybe eliminate this one, but we'll see. All right. Oh, and now we're on go five, which is around the virus and board's really concerned about that and want to stay on top of it. Think you had only two actions here. Reports on the district's response to the pandemic, that's receiving regular reports and changing public health guidelines, including preparations for the eventual reopening of district campuses and facilities, impact of the pandemic on student progress and use of pandemic-related funds.
Yes.
So you, that's happening. And you probably have to continue it for a while. And then on B, work with the Chancellor, continue to ensure coordinated approach among the colleges to address student housing. And we had a long discussion, but we took food and security out of this one. I can't remember why. And student and employee access to technology. Comments on that one? Okay. And then we get to our favorite, board effectiveness. So you've established clear goals and expectations for the Chancellor and created a relationship for achievement of of saying. Get along okay with your Chancellor?
Yes.
Okay. Then in accordance, oh, and how's delegation of authority going?
It is going fantastic. It is not a problem at all.
Excellent.
It it, at least from my perspective, board members, I, you know, if you see it differently. But I, I think I have the board's trust and they've delegated authority made during periods where we're dark. Or if they're not available and like during the winter break, so I I haven't.
And she has not betrayed that trust. She's been incredible.
Wow, who was I talking?
All right, don't start no messing up.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not. I just had to double check.
Thank you, Trustee Handy.
Helen, you are just making trouble.
I'm trying not to. I can hardly resist, though. I really could. I know that some people have very high standards. Okay, so C, ensure development and implementation of a cycle of review. Oh, yeah, on board policies. How's that going?
Uh, Chancellor, you need to, you need to share the incredible work here.
Oh, it is. We are moving forward. We have established in a matrix of all of our board policies. We've identified priorities for completion. We've identified as part of that, the ones that are required by the league for us to complete. We're moving forward with that in a timely manner. And we've got our APs and BP scheduled for review for this next year. And JB, Joseph, Dr. Joseph Balinski is moving forward.
Oh, that's wonderful. Congratulations. Oh, that that, do you feel my heart warming all the way from Texas?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, and D, adhere to BP twenty-seven, forty-five, A-plus self-evaluation and all that. I think you're on target, right?
Yes.
Do we have a comment on the no, on the person who wrote no to that?
No, I don't know who did what. I, and I don't know who took it, so I mean, I can't know.
Yep.
All right. And then conduct a media progress update on board goals, doing it right now. And somebody's put a thirty, no. Somebody did put thirty-three percent, oh, no, there. Wow. Okay. Uh, and then F, cultivate a strong positive CEO board relationship that promotes the success of students, the colleges and district as a whole. Little redundant to what we talked about earlier, but important. So that's going well. Identify issues and items requiring strategic oversight not listed in board goals and monitor accordingly. And we didn't make a list of what those things would be, but you responded to it. Do you want to talk about what some of those things might be that aren't listed? I know one thing we had on here was something around technology last year that we would talk about periodically. Comments on that? We're at the end. So this was just to remind you, you said you were going to do, get the status. How do you feel about it? Any comments?
Seems like we're doing a really good job of progressing and the Chancellor, our staff, our faculty and our board for really digging in and doing a great job.
Yeah, I commend you. Wow, it's amazing.
So I have a question. You know, as we develop the board goals, we kind of develop them and we develop them in the abstract, right? So I think what I'm wondering is.
Can't hear you, Cindy.
Oh, my gosh, hold on.
I I think new AirPods should have been on your Christmas list.
No, I like my Christmas gifts. Okay, is this better? A little bit?
Little bit.
Not at all. It's drop, it's it's as if your speaker's not on.
Is this one better?
Oh yeah, that's it completely.
For a little while. So when we, so here's a question that I have. When we develop these board goals, we kind of develop them in the, a little bit in the abstract. I guess my question is, in order to make them meaningful for all of our trustees, is there, and we get so many reports, so it, how do we make either the language or the evaluations or the board goals closer to home so that you are able to look at them and answer them? I, I guess the question is, what did we not do correctly here that didn't enable everyone to be able to, to just fill them out? What can we do better is my question?
I mean, it, it may be just not, maybe going through them verbally, which is time consuming, is better for people because they can talk about it. They don't have to remember so much on their own. Or there could be notes in here. It's a lot of work to do it that way.
Any other thoughts?
But the board members need to be saying what they want and what form you want it in.
Right. Us to others?
I don't know, it took about ten or fifteen minutes to do. We got a couple prompts. It seemed like it was accessible, so I don't know Cindy.
Okay.
All right, so I have just one more little thing, the statement of cooperation. I know it's not the favorite thing for some of you, but some of you started filling it out and some, and five people completed, which is great. So let me just pull it up. It won't take but a minute to go through it. And Madam President, I don't know, let's see, which one is it? It's this one, I think. Yes, this is it. So we have the statements and we just set this up so that it will be strongly agree, agree or disagree. And you would determine the extent to which the board meets the established standard. So the board is continuing to work on trust in and among our members. So twenty-eight point, so all seven people answered this one and twenty-eight point six of you disagreed with this. Forty-two point nine percent agree and twenty-eight point six percent strongly agree. So I will ask you, this is, this was about trust and we know where it was when we started, probably low. And it looks like some of you feel it was higher. Do you want to comment on this? What, why you think it's low or why you think, do you think it's improved? It's the question. And then if it hasn't, then what do you think, what more do you need to do? Are you developing some trust? So Madam Chair, I'm assuming you want to have a little discussion, just especially on this one?
Yes, absolutely. I don't know if you can hear me, but yes, let's have at it.
And what I really wanted to start with is the fact that the board president reads these at every meeting. And I know some of you were like, oh my God, do we have to go through this every time we meet? So maybe that's where we start. And maybe it's better now. I know at first it was an issue for some people.
So clarifying question. And maybe for me and the vice president, but is the baseline of this from our previous retreat or before trustee Delphine Polk and I got here? And then second, I guess this would be for you, Dr. Benjamin, how do we measure this? How do we measure? Is it a feeling? Is it? You know?
Yeah.
How do we, how's, what's the measurement?
I think it's subjective and how you, you know what the behavior was like. Let's just, we, we developed this. Help me Cindy, was it January?
A little bit before, right? Definitely.
Twenty twenty.
I think it was December, December twenty twenty.
Yep.
December, yeah, we had a long meeting. It took us a while to get your agreement.
Yep.
On these, Linda missed a meeting. We went and she and I worked through it separately after everybody and then you guys came to agreement and actually signed. So if I had done this a little more deeply, I would have asked you to give evidence as to why you wrote what you wrote, but it's strictly subjective. I mean, the other way you could do it, and you have not chosen to do this, and some boards do have a three sixty self-evaluation. Every two or three years where they include people who regularly come to board meetings and have them respond and then they have as a first year their baseline data, just to see how others perceive them, not only how they perceive themselves. So we don't have any data like that. So it's only you and, and how you think about, how you feel about your relationships, if they are better, let's say than they were a year ago before you made these, this agreement. So some of you apparently think it's not bad, not too bad. And I'll just scroll down so you can see the responses to all the rest of them and look, look at the strongly agree, agree and disagree.
I have a question kind of related to that, Dr. Benjamin. Um, since I think this came about right when trustee Jenkins and I got elected. Was it the understanding at the time that this would be, that we would read this out at every meeting and reevaluate this every six months for the foreseeable future? Was there a timeline associated with that or, or what was?
No, and I, um, it just, I think Cindy and I had a conversation and I probably recommend it that she would, to remind, as a reminder to people about the behavior because I think it had gotten a little bit out of control to some people. And the board wanted things to be different. And this was a way to, 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 for lack of a better way to say it, improve the public behavior and therefore the image of the board.
Okay.
And everybody said, each person said that they would abide by these statements. And the only ones where you have disagreement, if you notice the first two on, the first one on trust and the other is we agree to listen and seek to understand others and opposing viewpoints with the expectation of good intentions and a deep commitment to the district students.
May I ask a question, Dr. Benjamin?
Yes.
So given our two newer trustees questions, is there something undergirding that? Like, can you, is there, is there something that you kind of wanted to bring out? Is there? I, I'm just, I'm just trying to think, is there something else underneath those related questions?
So is it, we weren't a part of this?
Yeah, I mean, is it right? Is that, is that what it is? Or is it in the past year? Because we, we created this last year, right? And so so I guess were your responses with that understanding in the past year or were your responses since it doesn't relate to you because you weren't here in the past to Dr. Benjamin's point?
So if I'm understanding you correctly, Madam President, so my response was for the past year. But we don't have the baseline of negative, I don't want to say negativity, but challenging board meetings. So the baseline is probably the same as in, the baseline is probably the same as it is right now.
As it was last year?
Yeah.
Okay, good. And, and I think the operative verb here is continuing, right? Continuing to work. So we're not saying, the question isn't, do we all trust each other? It's continuing to work. And so if there's a disagreement that we're not continuing to work at all, then that's, that should also be talked about.
Yeah, and I was just curious as to what the conversation was about timeline.
So this particular one, if you choose to continue supporting this statement of cooperation, this will be the baseline and then next year we'll have something to compare it to. Cause we didn't do one at the begin, at the very beginning. We had trouble getting a green, that was tough itself, but we got it done. You got it done. So I'm gonna scroll up so you can look at it. I won't go, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I didn't realize my, I was unmuted. But you know, some of the things that to me are just not measurable in terms of whether we're moving forward or not. It's like, if the code of ethics is violated, violated, we commit to follow the process, but there hasn't been a known instance of that. So how do you even say whether we're doing this or whatever? I think that this is, this is what it should be, but I don't think you can really measure it unless somebody violates it.
Yeah, unless you had a complaint and maybe, and maybe people aren't, I don't know if you had violations before we decided on this or not.
So that's why I think it's difficult to answer whether it's working or it's not working. Personally, I think that I really do not like having it read. I, I feel like the, it's not so, you know, the board has its, the board is elected to do a job. And the board does that job. We agree or we agree to disagree. But reading that in open session, it's like now the board or kindergarten is being reprimanded by the principal, but the public continues to have the same behavior. So the, you know, there, there's no, um, there's no code of behavior or ethics. So we still continue to get battered by the PFT and all of those, those folks. Whereas here, we're going, you know, we're gonna behave or we're not gonna behave. I don't think you've, you've come out with anything saying where, you know, no, no blood has been drawn, no, nothing, you know, we agree to disagree. And especially a lot of the challenges came because of the leadership or the lack of leadership that was there before. All of those things changed when Dr. Jackson finally came in. So for me, this part doesn't work for me at all. It's just, to me, it's just words and I have a real problem with words versus actions. I want to see actions. I don't care about the words. So in terms of us rating whether we're moving that way or not, I think it's kind of difficult. You know, like we will strive to fulfill the vision we established for ourselves. How do you measure that? You know, what you feel is striving may not be what I'm feeling is striving. What I think is important is, does it appear that we're striving? But for me to try to rate that and say that it's very difficult because I don't know what Kevin's doing or thinking. I don't know what anybody else is thinking or doing. So I can't say we're moving it. All I can say is meeting some more peaceful, we're getting things done. There's no blowouts and, and public sessions and that's what we should be all striving to continue to have moving forward. You know, if we're.
But there, there is a difference. It sounds as though you're saying that the behavior between and among board members has improved.
Yes.
And that it has more to do with the district leadership than with board members that change.
No, I think that, I think the challenges and the changes had to do more with the who was leading the district, how that person came to be, how, how those changes happened and how the previous leadership benefited some people's agendas and not others. And it caused total disruption. And when that person was gone, other than the cleaning up that had to be done, though a lot of the challenges were not there. I mean, in the end, it was a horror show for everyone. That, you know, that, that person's presence was a horror show for everyone, just trying to people, I think we come here to do what's best for the district. And when you have a chaotic leadership as we had, how do we do that? So that created a lot of tension, distrust or whatever. For me, I'm, I'm trust with verification. Right now, I don't have any reason to distrust anyone. You know, I think everybody's doing okay. And if that changes, then, then we deal with that there. But there's a huge difference in the board when you have knowledgeable, experienced leadership as opposed to the chaos that was taking place a year ago. So I don't think, um, that this is, I don't think that those behaviors, they, they don't, I don't think any of those things fit anymore because we're not in that, we're not in the middle of that mess. We have, you know, there's things that have to be dealt with. But what was going on with Carla? And how it was impacting our whole district and stuff? Well, I would have to say it was the worst I'd ever experienced in my nineteen years of being in office. I've never seen anyone so incapable and, and just, it was, it was bad and that was chaotic. The moment she left, the moment Dr. Jackson went in, I don't feel the need to call into the district for anything. I don't keep, I'm not kept up nights worrying about whether the district's gonna fall apart or anything. I don't have challenges where things that I had to worry about before, had to worry about because we didn't have that leadership in place.
Can we ensure that there are no names that are actually said during this open session meeting?
Well, Carla's gone. Carla's gone and.
Please let's not do that. Let us not do that. That is not appropriate at all. No.
What's not appropriate to say that's a previous chancellor?
With our, whatever opinions you have of particular previous leaders.
Okay, I know, I just, all right, I've already stated as.
Associate names and let us.
I'd already said our previous chancellor.
Chancellor.
And then I said her name. We all know who it is and we, and, and now it's not about that. Now it's about what created the havoc and we don't have those problems. I don't believe that trustees get to be trustees and not having to be watching out or hyper vigilant about other issues that were going on. There was a lot of behaviors that have, I don't know, when I put unsure at the top, I don't know if those behaviors have just gone underground or if those behaviors have, have, have stopped. I can't say that. So on some of those, continuing to work on trust in and among our members, I don't know if people are doing that or not. I can just say that it's a lot more pleasant.
Yes, and the relationships seem to have improved.
Seem to have improved, but I, you know, I can't say if somebody's continuing to, if the board is continuing to work in trust. Because I don't, I don't know what people are doing. I'm just saying it would appear to be that way.
Okay.
But for me, mostly it's trust with verification.
What about others? Do you feel the same way Linda does about the, your relationships now as opposed to when we felt the need to do this? Cause there was a kind of urgency to do something. Things were.
Absolutely.
Yeah, between and among board members. Others, any other comments?
Would love to hear from others, please, as well.
I think the relationships are great and being one of the newer trustees, I can call most of the other trustees and have a conversation about things that are going on, ideas that I have and get positive feedback and reinforcements. So without reservation, I, I believe I have a good relationship with all of my board members, all of my fellow colleagues.
Okay.
Can I just hop in here?
Certainly.
Well, now that Linda and I are like just best friends at every meeting, things go much better. Uh, no, but quite seriously, I, I think that she and I and other board members have actually really made a conscious effort to not let disagreements be disagreeable. And to the extent that we've been successful, all of us, things go better in the board meeting. Yeah, you know, the reading the statement of cooperation. Yeah, you know, the reading the statement of cooperation at the beginning. Maybe seems a little tedious. And and maybe seems like chastisement. I, I think. The challenge for each of us is that each of us feels like, well, our, our behavior was impeccable. It was somebody else who was having the problem. And, and so I think if we all collectively own it and it's like, all right, look, forget how you feel, just, just. Suck it up. And try to be a responsible elected citizen, uh, elected official in, in public. Regardless of how you feel and, and so forth. I think we all do a lot better. And I, you know, frankly, I'll attribute a lot of this to Cindy. Who has, um, you know, look, none of us is perfect. I'm sure everybody has their critiques of, of leadership. But I think it's a hard job. It's a really hard job. And so to suck it up and kind of like. Have patience when your mind is exploding with impatience. You know, I think is, is hard to do. And to keep that, to keep a group of independent elected officials on balance requires everybody's cooperation. But it particularly requires the cooperation and leadership from the top. Um, and you know, I, I've had my share of run ins with Cindy. I've had my share of disagreements, et cetera. But I don't know, overall, I think we're doing a lot better. Is there room for improvement? Sure, we could do better. Linda, maybe we should go out for lunch sometime.
You know, Nicky, it gets scary when we keep agreeing on stuff.
You know, well, let's scare each other a little bit more then, okay? All right.
If I may, what's actually been interesting and you two never realized it because you were on different ends was that. To many people, you often had similar points of agreement. Um, so kudos to both of you that you're actually allowing yourselves to know that you have points of agreement. Um, I, I would say that, yeah, it's a pain. It's a pain to actually read this at every board meeting for sure. And uh, and I would say that maybe to a certain extent, um, actually definitely. We did act appropriately at the board meetings. And, and I say that with a collective, we, all of us are guilty. Um, and so maybe not our two new trustees, but we did not. And so we needed to do this to set the stage. Create boundaries and ensure that we, we adhered to them. Um, is it still a pain? Yes. Have we gotten better? Yes. Um, and so, I don't know, uh, should we continue to do this? I'm gonna give that to you, Dr. Benjamin. I'm gonna give that to you, Chancellor, whatever you think we should do. I almost feel like there's a part of it that we should because we are still, we still have problems. And we are still wanting to work together.
Well, I know some districts have a, a statement of cooperation and they, they have it as a board policy. And they don't, you know, they know it's there and hold themselves accountable to it. Um, you might want to graduate to just having it in the agenda, you know, as part of the agenda. Just in a cer- certain spot in the agenda every month listed.
I agree.
I have my hand up, but I.
Oh, I'm sorry. And Cindy's calling on people.
I, I know, I'm sorry.
Because we have the screen up. Where's your hand?
Oh, I can move the screen now, I guess.
I can't see any of you.
Cause it's me messing up something.
I think my opinion, again, being external and not being here during um, some of the. And I'll, I'll just say some of the, the actions and chaos that was going on at that time. I, I think that it was necessary um, to remind ourselves. Um, you as well as me and the public, um, that these are our standards. This is what we adhere to. Um, it, it may be that we have graduated to a point. Where we don't need to read the entire document. Or maybe we read a, a paragraph that summarizes it. Uh, just as a reminder, but not read each statement, but have the entire document there um, for reference. And um, maybe work with the, the president to uh, craft something. Um, that captures the essence of what's in there without reading each and delineating each item that's there. I really think that it reminds us sometimes um, of where we come from. Um, and that we don't want to go back to that place again. Um, and, and so my recommendation would be, um, as Dr. Benjamin indicated. Maybe putting it as part of the agenda, um, but also not just have it in the agenda. Um, because it becomes like so many things, you, it's there, but you don't even see it. And you, you don't even hear it because it, it just becomes kind of a placeholder. Um, but actually maybe making an abbreviated statement and, and I'd be willing to work with. Um, the board president to provide something at the next board meeting um, for review. Um, to that end, since that would be the first meeting where we would have our regular meeting and we do have a closed session. Um, at that time, and that would be a progress report that I could provide to the board at that time. If that is a consensus on that.
I think that that is a good idea. How do others feel? Because we, we need to have something that continues to keep us um, on point. But maybe not all of the years.
I think as, as Dr. Benjamin said, um, other colleges have an abbreviated statement. It could be up on the screen while they're, we're waiting to transition from one, from closed session to open session. It could be on the agenda. Um, but again, an abbreviated piece. And then I think that would be easier for you than having to read all of that, Cindy.
Totally, yes. However, it's something that we still need to read aloud because having it up for people to see, this isn't for other people. It's for us.
That's what I said, but we already, we already know it's there. We've made the agreement. We don't need to, we don't need to have that. What I'm saying is having an abbreviated statement, reading, read abbreviated statement.
Agreed. And, and I would.
You know what? Maybe you could graduate to your vision statement. It's just one, I, I don't have it in front of me. Anyway, Jeanette said she would work with you on it.
Yeah, and, and, and just to point out. Get to this far, to have this discussion about it shows the progress that we made.
I see trustee Jenkins.
And you, Madam President, I have a thought. At what point is there not a need for it? And I understand what you were saying, Madam President, that this is to remind us. But at what point is that, there that trust between us as board members that there's no need for this? Because we know that we're gonna be respectable. As Nikki says, we can disagree without being disagreeable. What point do we not need to remind ourselves anymore?
I don't know. I don't think we're there yet, though. That's a, you know, that's, that's the only response that would be, I think, at least to be honest, my appropriate response. Um, I don't know, but we are, we are not quite there yet.
Okay.
So maybe six more months, maybe another year, maybe one, I don't know, who knows?
How about when we're fully accredited? I'm joking, I'm joking.
There, uh, and I don't want to belabor this point. But there is a, a comment that I, I would like to make though, and that is. That as, as elected officials, we are held to a higher standard and therefore we are public servants. And therefore, what the public says is what the public says, we are elected officials. So I just, you know, I just wanna put that out there. So what do we do with this? Uh, Dr. Jackson, you and I will work on this and we'll come up with some shorter version. That we will work with for the next X board meeting. And see how it goes in terms of creating a framework still for our board meeting.
Yes, I, I would be more than happy to work with you on that, President of Belarus. And I do have, um, if we're finished, I, I do have the documentation on the um. The last accreditation visit and the comment that I said I would find out. Where we were meeting the standards and I could try to share my screen just so you can see. I cut it to get from the actual report that we got from the visiting team. But I have to have the, the host let me share and if you want me to do that now, I could do it later. All right, let me try to share my screen. It won't take me long.
And Dr. Benjamin, we concluded that.
Yes, I, I, I am, I am done. Thank you very much. I'll look at that. I want to see this though, and then I'll.
Are you saying you're trying to get out of here?
No, I'm not.
Oh, I'm sorry. Not really.
Ten o'clock, it's ten o'clock where I am.
Yeah, here is the feedback from the team's visit and I cut and pasted, there were ten recommendations. Um, three of those recommendations were for finance. Um, seven of those were directed at the board. Of the seven, um, only three remain. Uh, for the board to work on. However, it indicated that the board is on track and uh, should meet the standards. So I'll just quickly um, go, the, the top three are finance. Um, this is the first one and the ones that are in yellow are the ones that we still need to work on. Um, this is academic quality, integrity, effectiveness. And what it says is the team verified that the institution has been meeting the outcomes of its plan to date. The institution is on schedule to address the requirement and meet the standard uh, by June thirtieth. So um, it, all of them kind of say the same thing, that we're on track. The institution has a plan to correct the deficiencies. Uh, but other recommendation was the requires that the board reaches decision. All board members act in supportive decisions. Uh, we have been doing that, but I think they still want us to continue that process. So it says the institution has not yet had time to fully address the requirement. We have fully addressed it. It just not, it hasn't been a year yet. So I think that was why that was done. Um, this one, we fully meet the requirement um, that we adhere to clearly defined policy for evaluating the CEO. We've been doing that. We meet the standard. Uh, this recommendation, just uh, number seven. Is one that again, the institution has not yet had time to fully address this. This has to do with um, the governing board functions as independent policymaking body that reflects the public interest. Uh, again, I think it's just a matter of time, but we are doing that. And then recommendations eight, nine and ten, we've completed um, and we meet the standards. Um, recommendation number eight has to do with the formal process of regularly assessing its policies. We've done that. Number uh, nine has to do with the board delegating responsibility and authority to the chancellor. We've met that standard. And then number ten uh, requires that district clearly delineate, document. And communicate the operational responsibilities and functions of the district from those of the colleges. Uh, we did that with our functional maps and that has been completed. So um, there is only three items that the board specifically were addressed. And again, we have a plan and I think this one just has to do with time. They want to just make sure that we're consistent with what we've already been doing.
Thank you for that, getting that information.
Okay, so that concludes um, my time with you tonight. Thank you very much. Always a pleasure. Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year, Dr. Benjamin. Thank you, thank you.
We appreciate it. Goodbye, everyone.
We're a journey, right? Officially.
Officially a journey.
All right, good night, everyone. Thanks.
Good night, everyone.